Present.
I feel like I should have a kettle with a Salvation Army sometime when they come here, but you're asking for national money. As you know, the first phase of the Union River Trail at Estero-Radman Walking Trail was completed. And there was some funds left from that trail that later had to be used in return to the state. And they amounted to about $5,000. I talked to the state about this. I've talked to Scott on those too. I'll send these maps around here. This, what we were asking to do is look at exploring the extension of the trails onto the concrete plant and potentially going all the way to the fire academy. We've had contacts with the fire, concrete company, and we also had contact with the fire academy. At this point, we do, if we go through the, we pick up the area along the concrete plant, it'll afford $5,000. And for a little bit further, we can get, for $2,000 more, we can pick up also the fire academy and we'll, we'll be all the way to the end of the borough as far as looking at that as a long-term project. So I've laid this, how this would lay out as far as the design. At this point, I want to, I want to, in order to move this along, I need, because the grant went to the borough, I need the borough to authorize Scott or whoever to sign a contract to do the, this extra survey work. Whether it goes, and I'd say it's a pretty good deal, we'd get both of them at the same time to get this done. I asked you whether you'll either consider, consider the whole thing or whatever. I'm just asking, that's the first part I want to ask tonight. The $5,000 that's in that fund, there's $2,000 more, we want to pick up the rest of it. And, and I'll, you know, I'm going to talk to the, I am going to talk to the visitor's bureau about helping with that, but I'm not positive they'll do it. I'm just asking, I'd like to get the authorization so we can move this along because there's some other things that are going to be talked about after this that go beyond this point to look at how additional funds could be put in place to extend that trail. And I hope most of you have seen the trail because I think people who have seen it find it a plus for the community.
Absolutely.
Yes, it is.
So my question, you're saying, when you say the extra, the $5,000 that's left over from the grant will cover up to the cement plant?
Cover the cement plant, but it won't cover the fire academy.
So that's...
That would be another $2,000 on top of that. I'm just saying they're giving us a discount, we can get them together and they'll have all of it done. That's why I'm asking this at this point. And if we can find a way to either, if you can contribute to the $2,000 or I can get the fire, the visitor's bureau to contribute something to it, I'm looking at that too. But the timing, if the weather holds up, I'd like to get this, the survey done because then we have a better idea about some other logistics with this thing and then we can talk about that too.
Right.
So that's my first request.
Okay.
Do you want to go to the next?
So, Bill and the representative, two representatives from me, the representative of the concrete plant, Tim and myself went down and walked this. And, you know, for anybody that's been down to the concrete plant...
I have pictures of it.
It's rough. So we, there's only one way to go around the concrete plant and that's to go down by the river, okay? So, Bill has been in, so we can't use asphalt on the lower part of that because on the high water, the asphalt washes away.
Well, we, we will look at that for it. We're not positive about that.
But the one thing Bill has done is he's talked to the concrete plant since the transportation cost would be minimal utilizing concrete instead of asphalt in that section around the concrete plant. The other thing that it does is going low there next to the river versus across the top, the construction costs would be far less because there would be some major, major construction to bring that into a workable trail where at the same level as the concrete plant.
But the cost, and I'm going to show the cost for the overall too, but I think the, this is only, if you pick up the concrete plant and the asphalt, the concrete plant and the fire academy is about a half mile, so it's not quite as far as what we did now. But we have some logistics as, as Scott was talking about. One was the topography, you had to go down and then come back up to the level, on the level area. We have, we're in the floodway on the bottom down through there and some other issues. And so, and we crossed, there's two stream crosses, which we're trying to avoid building a bridge across it. So, but I'm giving you an idea of how rough this is if you went right behind the concrete plant. That's why I'm giving those photographs, so you give me a better illustration. So, now do you want me to show you the numbers or you want to still keep going? I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to overkill you at one time, but I do want to make sure we can make a decision, at least on one thing, which is that we can move forward with spending the money to finish the survey, use the survey money or we'll end up turning it back. We're at a point where we're going to have to close this project out and I don't like turning money back. And I, I think this is a pretty good deal, the state's willing to let us extend this. I'm just saying, and then for a little bit more, we might pick up, we'll pick up both properties, but that's up to you, how you want to play this.
Do, well, I can't make a motion. Do you want to make a motion for discussion or what would you like?
Tell us the rest. What's the cost to do the whole, the whole trail? I mean, the first segment that we just got done was substantial.
This will be substantial too.
That's what I'm afraid of.
These are, this is still rough estimates and I don't think that, of that frame stuff. And that's one of the reasons for the survey because then we'll have a better idea about certain things.
Well, if you can't afford it after the survey's done, then, then you're all right.
So, the estimated cost to construct the trail across the concrete plant and onto the academy would run about $500,000 plus the engineering cost, which run about $53,000. We're going to, what we were going to do is look at applying for two grants, which we done, they were doing one, two in April and one, two in May. And that would pick up the majority of the cost except for the, about the $53,000. And that would come from, this can come from different ways. I'm suggesting at least portion of it can come from your CDPG funds, portion could possibly come from the visitor's bureau, which I will be talking to them next week about. And then a portion may come from some Act 13 funds from the county. So it's a split to make it work. But that would bring you all the way up to the line with grant. And you, and part of this, the way this is laid out, we need another turnaround area and this is what this would do, you have turnaround area at the fire academy so you have another way to get into the trail.
The hardship would be the engineering cost.
Yes.
That's what we had to pay for the first segment, which Ralton will pick up.
Yes. Well, the, yeah, whatever, how we did that.
Forty, forty-three thousand, you say?
It, it was a little bit more than that, but that's, that's fine. I mean, it was about the same, we're talking about the same price range, but like I said, there's some, there is some issues with this portion. And then one thing we don't know too, and that's one that we'll find out more, is if there's any special permits we have to deal with the DEP, that's another thing we have to look at too. But I can't do this without, you know, getting some, some feedback from you because what I'm proposing is if we do this, it would be a county application with the financial support from the borough on this one part of it. And then eventually you would have the maintenance of the, of the trail. And like I said, we were looking at some kind of either, either asphalt or a combination with, with, with concrete depending on how we can work out with the asphalt company and what section that.
Now, is this a situation where we have to do the survey before we apply for grant funding?
Well, the, the survey would help, that's, that's true. But I'm not saying it's, it's not absolutely necessary, but if you, but we have this, we don't, we have a, we have a window here to use this money from the state.
And how long is that?
Probably about six months.
Can that money be reallocated to another project?
No.
Cannot?
Either, either we defer this or it goes back.
Okay, all right. So this is left over from the original grant?
Yeah, yeah.
I see.
So I'm just can't, I can't, and so I'm, I asked them, this is a, I thought this was pretty nice and they said we could use it because, so for this, because they say, they say this is an extension. We're sort of on a positive roll with this project because I think the state likes this project. It also ties in with some of, you know, there's a mainline canal, 9/11 memorial trail that's going to, that they're picking up from Huntington County, it's going to come from here. This will tie directly into that as a, as a segment to that too. So we'll have some pluses going into this. I'm not jumping in and down because there's a lot to this application, but I'm telling you, I talked to commissioners, they're willing to let us put the application together if we can get this together. But I, I told Scott, if you don't want to make a decision on the application, at least supporting that portion, I can, we can, I have, I can wait, go to finance committee and then come back to your next meeting, but I got, I don't have much time to do this with because I, those are, done the applications, it's not something I can just do overnight or something like this. So I sort of need some direction. I do want to make sure we can at least do something on the survey so I can give some direction on that too, so.
Let me get this straight. The survey is going to cost $7,000. The $5,000 either has to go to the survey or we lose it.
Yes.
And our downside then is $2,000 and if the project doesn't come to fruition, we spent $2,000, but we have the survey in place.
Yes, that's correct. So that's, it's, that, that part's a small part of it, yeah.
And then if we do apply for the grant, we're going to be on hold for probably $15,000 to $60,000 in engineering fees.
Somewhere in that range, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
But I'm saying that, I'm saying I've outlined some ways of how that could pay, you could pay for that.
And that's the visitor's bureau and Act 13.
And, and some, and some CDPG money. It'd be a combination, we can work that through, but I'm going to have to, we'd have to play this out, but I'm saying, part of this cost for this, you can see this, this almost $54,000, about $7,000 is for this, the survey, so it's already in this, this cost system. But like I said, the only thing we are still waiting to hear from is DEP, what kind of permits they're going to have. The only permit right now, we know we're going to have to do an NPS permit, but we, there are probably some other permits we just need to confirm and that's one of the reasons, that's a little bit up on the air what we have to do on that. But we're still working through that process right now, but at this point, I'm just asking, I need, I need one thing and then find out whether you'll entertain the other or let it go to finance and bring it back at your next meeting, but I, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
So, and I mean, I saw Lucas is here too. So the survey will establish where the, you'll find, you'll be able to find the borough line and mark it and where the, the borough property from the old, the old Canal Railroad property ends there on the other side of the asphalt plant? I mean, that has some value to it and over and above this.
Was the survey to survey the borough line or to survey the trail?
It's a survey of both properties so we know where the trail should go. So we will pick up both, we'll survey both properties and you'll know, it'll come, it's going to end right there at the borough line.
Would the property owners be willing to pay for part of the survey?
No, property owners are willing, are, we're discussing providing easements across their property.
They are willing to do that at this point?
The concrete company has told us if we can provide a liability insurance, they will probably sign off on this. The fire academy is interested in doing it, but it has to get up approval from legislature to cross their property to get an easement form. So, and I, I think that's going to be purely positive, so. And as, and we're, we're talking to the concrete company about providing some kind of help on the concrete and we do that too.
I thought I'd remember the discussion about the Grandville Township line actually coming to this side of the river.
That squared away. We're, we're on, it's on, we're in, we're in the borough. That part we, and that, and Solicitor Remy has been aware of this too, hardly seen the proposal, what was done on that from previous time. So we, we know we're in the borough. So that's not the issue. The issue is just making sure we don't go beyond the borough line because of whatever maintenance would be involved. And I'm trying to minimize maintenance by the way we're, how we develop this thing, just like we are on this first phase. But I'd say, I mean, all this takes time, but even if we did this now, you wouldn't even know whether you're going to be successful till the end of the year, even if we did put an application to spring together. It's just, but I'm coming early to see whether, how we play this at this point, so.
I had an opportunity to walk the trail and it's, it's beautiful. It is so nice up there and I can't tell you how many other people were there. It was on a Sunday and it was very cold, but there were a lot of people, a lot of people up there. Something nice for the, for the area.
So tonight what you really need, Bill, is, is some type of, do we want to move forward on the survey?
That's the first thing.
That's the first thing, so?
That's what I'm trying to get, that part, so we can get the authorization because I said, if the money had been awarded to the county, I wouldn't even be bothering you with this, but it was awarded to you, so you have to sign off on that, use that money. Otherwise, I don't know what we can do without, I mean, we worked with Scott about, you know, getting some materials and supplies or certain things we can do, but we're, we're at an impasse right now. We need to do, do this or, because we'd like to close it out too. That's the other reason I would like to do this, because it just takes time to take care of all the paperwork involved and things.
Okay, we'll have to move on, Bill.
So, no, no action?
No motion's been made, so?
Okay, then I, I, then I'm going to need to know something about the $5,000 because we'll have to close, we'll have to close it out soon, so I would appreciate, you know, knowing something on that soon.
Okay, thank you for your time, Bill. Moving on, we have the consent agenda. And we are going to pull the Little League application out till next meeting so that we get the certificate of liability insurance and clear up some dates. So that'll come back on next month's consent agenda.
What were the Comcast letters?
That they're changing a channel and they're adding another channel.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion, do you have a second?
I have questions.
Sure, Mark.
Down here on the audit on I. So we have things on here where the auditor picked up on the Liston Borough with, to provide a final settlement from spring. They'll revise that for 2018. Have, have this, has this been addressed and anybody follow up with compliance on this that we're doing this?
The school district will have to follow up with compliance with that, not us.
There were several areas where...
It was all the same thing.
...to provide.
Well, there's some that are different than others, but they are, there are quite a few that are similar.
I asked that question too.
Actually, back to the, the youth baseball facilities. Well, we can discuss it another time against when insurance is in. In, in talking with Mr. Eversol, there was a concern of another league trying to get in under these guys and I think that that is a concern. When it's generally the Mifflin County Baseball League, I mean, these guys, aside of borough staff, I mean, they really take care of these fields and have done a lot to improve these fields. I would hate to see them lose the opportunity to use them.
Right now.
That would be detrimental.
Absolutely.
The league and the kids involved.
What's this letter having to do with Liquor Control Board and Nittany Oil?
They want to sell beer.
Where?
At their location on East Poland Street.
That'll be right there at the, right there at the bridge. Do we have any standing or comment on that or just?
It was just notification.
Just a notification, okay.
If there's going to be a transfer of a license from outside of the borough into the borough, then we'll have to be adhering on that.
Does that be paid or no?
I don't know where the license is coming from. I know that...
Does it transfer?
Nittany, Nittany did one out in Brown Township that I did and they had purchased that one. There's like a repository of licenses that have been surrendered back to LCB and the one from Brown came out of that. Now I have no idea where this one comes from.
It just states, um, what section did the Liquor Committee provides? The board to inform your municipality of all applications filed for new license or transfer of license for premises not currently licensed situated in your municipality. So it doesn't specify.
That license was purchased by Nittany from the state in the recent auction. So there will be then, for appearance, if they want to move it into the borough?
You have a motion to go through the consent agenda.
We have a motion.
I already said.
Yeah, I know we need a second.
I'll second the motion. To approve the consent agenda.
Discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, on to the regular agenda. Treasurers' report.
So I need to get councils approval to submit a new salt contract participation agreement with Co-Stars. Last year we spent over $21,000 on road, road salt and going with Co-Stars allows us to save money so we don't have to advertise and the legal costs for bidding out the project. So I do need council's approval to be able to do that.
I'll move. I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor of approving, approving the agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. You're welcome. Rex, I do believe that you are up.
Okay, last month there was 52 violations found. Biggest one, 24 of those in garbage. There was, as I was getting into Wintertown, there was only 18 permits issued, zoning permits this year compared to 26 last year. Sidewalk there was four permits issued this year compared to 12 last year. Zoning fees collected in December was $1,262.12 compared to $3,790.76 last year. Estimated improvements last month was $57,651.60. And for the year total in the borough was $8,133,215.60 worth of improvements. There are no loan letters.
That would be our internal for 2018, so?
Yeah. And I did our rooming house inspections last month, I finished two of them beginning this month, so they're all taken care of. The ones not even open, I didn't even get to inspect it yet because they're closed down. And then we issued our amusement tax license to the businesses that has amusement machines in their businesses. Any questions?
I do have a question for you, Rex. Where's this property outfit for occupancy or use and you have five? Does that mean there were five new ones in the month of December?
No, people like, didn't pay their sewer bill or water bill.
Yeah, I get you, but all I'm asking is, is that five additional ones that was added, that were added in December?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barlett, hope you had a nice time in Florida. Welcome back to the court.
I do. It was a great trip.
I saw your picture at, uh, eating dinner. I'll just let that go.
Thank you. Fortunately, month of December, fire department business was slow, which usually doesn't happen. We only ran 14 alarms plus medical assistance in the month of December. For the holidays, that's, that's good. On Saturday, fire department lost a longtime member of the weekend. James Carson Jr. gave us 32 years of service. At 50 years of age, he died of cancer, he fought a two-year battle. We're going to have an memorial service for him up here at the Feerwein tomorrow. And on behalf of the fire department, I'd like to give my thoughts and prayers to his family. Jim will be missed, but never forgotten.
Thank you, Bob. Mayor?
The only thing I have this evening is the fourth quarter and the end of the year report for my wedding.
That's it, ma'am?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Jordan, please.
I have a question for the barn chief.
Yes.
Well, if we had our meeting with the consultant regarding consolidation, have you reviewed any of that?
I just got the stuff today.
Just got it today?
Frank, Bob and I went over that report, the final report from the consultant.
Okay. Now, what are you planning on doing over that with your station chiefs?
I'll make arrangements to meet with them, and also, we have a fire committee meeting coming up the first Monday of February. And we'll discuss some more there.
Okay.
I'll be in the morning before your next council.
Okay, and what are you going to give us, the listing of the men that are approved to be insured?
I have that. Scott has that. I have that, Frank.
You have that already? All right, now, do all those men have turnout gear?
I revise an interior firefighter does, yes.
Okay. How many more sets of turnout gear are you planning on buying and when?
We're in process now. Fireman's relief is in the process of finding it. And we're going to get each station, our seven set here.
How many?
Seven.
Seven.
That'll put them up to, uh, two more than we originally talked about. Originally, it was 45 sets total.
Okay.
And that was five sets per year for station. But this time, this time around, we're getting seven sets.
Well, now, we originally talked of 45 sets. And my count is a 30.
Yes, the 30 that the borough purchased.
30 so far.
Yes, now, we're in the process of purchase, and now there are 17.
17? I thought you said seven.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Each station is receiving seven.
All right, I thought you said seven.
No, no.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, now, Chief Evans?
Okay, we were fairly busy in December. We had 352 calls for service per month. Thirty-one traffic citations and 15 non-traffic. A lot of events going on throughout the month of December, and they seem to go pretty well. Uh, we did our Phila Cruiser event, um, and collected three carloads of food and about $400 in cash for the Lumina Center and Mother Hubbard's cover. Participated in some of the other events throughout the month. Uh, total calls for the year for 2018 was 3,186. And that's slightly down from last year. We had 3,312 for 2017, so a little bit less this year. That's all.
Can you fill us in on what happened with the housing authority, please?
Yes, we had, uh, received information from them that they were wanting to meet about the contract, which we had met with them, uh, November of 2017. Uh, myself and Mark Crim, we met with them. We've changed our procedure because we were disseminating information to them in the past that they, that we shouldn't have met. And they were not happy about not getting certain reports that we could not give them. So, um, we met with them in November 17, whatever, a new procedure. As far as we were concerned, everything was fine. Didn't hear anything from them throughout the whole year this year until we received the letter at the end of the year. Um, met with their board last Thursday. And basically, what came out of that is we need to revise the contract. It needs to be rewritten so that we're in compliance with the law. And, uh, we can move forward from there.
I was at the meeting. I mean, I'd say it was fairly productive, I think. You know, we pretty much hashed out where we're at. I have the, the new contract, um, ready to circulate on our side. Once everybody here signs off on it, we'll send it over to the, the authority to look at. I, I essentially scrapped the, scrapped the one that we had. I don't even know where it came from. And I found a, DCED had a, a form that I saw a lot of other municipalities had used to, to do these type of agreements. So, I started over with that form. You know, I think it's probably the one that's had the most looks at it. It seemed like a, like a good form of a contract to use.
So, question on the reports that they said they didn't receive. Was it a privacy issue? Did they get changed in the contract later down the road, or what?
Then Mark can explain a little bit about the Criminal History Information Act. I mean, that's basically what they were, in the past, they had been given reports that basically should not have been disseminated to anybody outside of law enforcement. So, they were used to receiving those kind of reports. When I started as chief in August 2017, I reviewed all of our procedures and policies at the station and looked at that and, and, you know, informed them that we can no longer provide that kind of information.
Yeah, the, the chief is, is correct. I mean, there's a law, Criminal History Records Information Act, CRIA, that very strictly controls the dissemination of what's called criminal history information. And that includes police reports. They, they can't just be disseminated to the housing authority. I, I think we've got the ability, though, to have a, a system in place that, that will give them what they want without, you know, violating CRIA.
And this new contract will be able to continue on the same in terms of our budget?
That was the plan. They didn't, they didn't really have any comment about the budget or the cost. It was more, you know, there were things in the contract that, yeah, so there's going to be bike patrols and things that just don't exist. So, they really felt that they wanted a contract that more accurately reflected what's really going on. And that makes sense. It's, it's-
Well, we do have one train officer that does, that can ride a bike, correct?
Yeah, we just started that again up, we started up again this year. That contract was written years ago. Like Mark said, I, we don't even know who wrote it or where it came from. But it was basically just signed every year, the same contract, but so, and there have been changes in the law over the last couple of years that have, they've gotten more strict with criminal information and, and things in our reports that we cannot disseminate. So, it, it needs to be revamped anyway, but
I think Dan understood that after we had our discussion. I think we're pretty much on board.
So, the matter's been resolved?
It's in the-
It's in the process.
It's a work in progress.
Making substantial steps, right?
Are we currently providing service to them now?
We're continuing the way we have been with the understanding that the contract's going to be retroactive through the first of this year, so that's-
No interruptions, sir.
No. And, I mean, looking at statistics, as far, you know, that's why it's sort of blindsided by their complaint because actually, the number of incidents we responded to have gone down in the past year. There hasn't been a tremendous increase in crime in the housing authority properties. I mean, I wasn't aware of a problem until they sent the letter out at the end of the year, you know. I didn't receive any complaints throughout the year, anyone not satisfied with your service, you know, anything, until the end of the year, they sent the letter. So, but met with them, and that's where it's at for now.
Maybe I'll ask you.
I have a question.
Thank you. And I know it says Rec Board had no quorum, but I think Miss End notices point to-
I do have one thing.
Yeah.
And it's just because we didn't want to leave it go. I mean, it is a little bit further out yet, but it's basically to waive the fee for a Midland County School District. It would be a total of $30. It's Mindy Stevens. Uh, what they're doing, it would be an ecology education for trout release with Trout Unlimited, uh, the Pennsylvania chapter. It would be grade five from Lewestown, grade four from Kish, and grade five at Sacred Heart. And what they want to do is they want a one-day event down at Rec Park. And the way I understand, they're actually going to do like a trout release. They have done this, I don't think they did it last year, but they've done it previously. Yes.
They did it somewhere last year because they raised the fish at Sacred Heart.
Oh, okay. I don't know where they raised the fish at, but I do know that's-
In an aquarium and all.
That's basically what, what they're looking at, if it's possible. And I know I did bring a letter from a principal from Midland County School District. It's just looking at waiving the total fee of $30, you know, for Borough Council here. And, you know, if it can't be, they understand that. But that's basically, I'm just here to present that so it doesn't like slide by and doesn't get caught the next month. So, that's basically what it's all about.
Doesn't get caught.
Ha ha, no pun intended, right? The letter was in the consent agenda, if you took the time to, to read over that, but, um-
And that's basically it. For now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to waive the facility use fee for the use of the students? Okay, then I guess we'll move on. Aye. You're welcome. Mr. Remy. You're up.
There's an ordinance for consideration tonight. It's amendments to the zoning ordinance having to do with signs in the C Commercial District. We have our public hearing before the, the Borough Council meeting. This has been kind of through, uh, law and ordinance a few times, and it was brought up to council, and council gave the authorization to advertise the ordinance, and, uh, tonight's the night, if anyone would like to make a motion to adopt changes to the sign ordinance.
Sure.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Brokaw?
Frank Ferrier?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Larry Seers?
Yes.
Mark Severs?
Yes.
Phil Wilson?
Yes.
Ben Shae? Yes.
Scott and I are going to switch seats here.
I do have a comment on that ordinance. In the future, whenever we consider something like this, rather than be blindsided by the cost of advertising, that should be part of the discussion, whether or not we want to move, we're on something or not. I was up in the air about the ordinance to start with, and, uh, the advertising cost of $2,300 is on the table. That, that should have been considered, you know, upfront, rather than be presented with a bill for the fact. Not that I'm faulting you, okay, but-
Yeah, I-
But really, that should be part of the consideration whenever we do business. It really should.
Absolutely.
He said, I mean, I don't set the advertising rates that is-
I understand that, your hands are tied, and, uh, you know, we directed you accordingly, but we have no idea if we're going to run that kind of money either. You know, I understand it was a zoning change, and it requires more advertising. I understand that. We'll, we'll have better the next time.
Okay. Back in November, December, Scott asked me to come to Borough Council, so talk to council about what you have available to you for dealing with blight in the borough. Um, you know, the past few meetings, there's been discussion of, of different properties that have, that are, you know, subject to blight. And what I wanted to do is just kind of get everything together in, in one place for you so you can, you know, decide how you want to direct staff, myself, to move forward in, in the future regarding dealing with these blighted properties. So, um, I have a more updated version of this, but, which I can email anybody who wants it, but I will just, I'll use this draft that I had sent to Scott since he has it looted. The first thing that we have for dealing with blight is the borough's property maintenance duties. That's the most, of course, frequently used. That's what Rex does. He, um, sends out notices and orders for two property owners whose property is in violation. Hopefully, they then comply with the notice and order. If they don't comply with the notice and order, then the matter can go to citation before a magisterial district judge. And, um, if the owner is found to be not in compliance, uh, they will be fined by the, by the judge. Similar is the, uh, UCC, the Uniform Construction Code that the borough has, has adopted. In part, really, there's a few parts that it didn't adopt. But it, um, it's another code that says, here's what is out there. If the person is not found to be in compliance with the code, there's a notice and order process. And, um, violations, people who don't cure their, their property's problems are referred again to an MDJ with the possibility of being fined if they don't comply. The borough did adopt a quality of life ticketing ordinance. That's kind of a newer sort of, um, code enforcement tool. The idea is to have a progressive discipline approach to, um, imposing consistent fines that go up as the person, uh, you know, fails to cure a violation. It's meant to kind of cut down some of the paperwork that's involved in a notice and order and hearing. Although, if the person who, uh, is subject to the ticket doesn't comply, they can go then to, um, the notice and order and hearing like, uh, like we had talked about previous for the building in UCC. There are some other things out there that are, you know, have come down from the state. One of them is a relatively new law. You see at the bottom, it says, as far as I can tell, no one's ever used this tool yet. But it's a, uh, idea to attach assets, real and personal property of people who have major code violations in the borough. And it would allow the borough not to just put a, a lien, for instance, on the subject property or other properties in the borough. This can reach out to, uh, properties outside the borough and to personal assets, even wages to the extent allowed by law. If, this is something, yes?
Yeah, a question being worked. Actually, I did some homework on this too. There's actually, if this still enacted, it's called Act 90 of 2010. Is that similar to what you're talking about?
Uh, yeah, it might have been changed once since then, but yeah.
Okay, because, I mean, it really, it's called Neighborhood Blight Reclamation and Rate Violization Act?
Mm-hmm.
Where it empowers us to deny permits and put lien on personal and real estate assets.
Right.
And as you said, you can also, it adds, it adds, uh, allows asset attachments against owners of real property and personal assets. And you're the key of putting this into place.
Right.
The other one is, they have on here where you have serious matters where it encourages the DA to be involved to charge repeat code violators with criminal misdemeanors on this as well.
Right, there's, um, permit denial, which you brought up, is also, um, something that the borough is allowed to do. You can deny building permits, um, zoning exceptions, things like that, um, to people who have serious code violations in place. And, um, you have that Municipal Code and Ordinance Compliance Act. That is, um, now, that's been changed, it used to be 18 months, and that's now 12 months when a new pro, a person who buys a property that's not in compliance is supposed to bring the property into compliance with Borough Codes. And there are some substantial penalties for, you know, people who would not do that.
Yeah, and the thing is, we need to have that referred to in our ordinance as well.
Right.
And what it does is it prevents the expansion of the property holders in PA where they just can't expand on that because we're holding them to it with the liens and stuff that we have on them. So, that, that's a big key too as well.
Right, and you had talked about, um, there is a, a criminal, potential criminal statutes for failure to comply with a code requirement. That's another one. I couldn't find that anyone has ever used this before. You know, before doing this, you would, you would probably want to have a, a serious talk with your district attorney to say, hey, listen, this is one of the tools that the law gave us. We want to make sure you would be on board with this. Because it, it basically involves filing criminal charges against- criminal charges against people who have multiple, repeat, serious code violations. And, you know, they talk about what are serious code violations. They're, you know, more than just, you had high grass. These are more health and safety related issues.
Yeah, I mean, because it says, it's based on convicted of second or subsequent violations of the same code poses threat to public health, safety, and property, and third property considered a public nuisance.
Right.
So.
Another thing that can be done, and this kind of makes some sense when you look at the history of some of our serious blighted properties, is disqualification of tax sale bidders. This is also pursuant to state law. The Tax Claim Bureau is allowed to disqualify people who have delinquent taxes and serious code violations as well as delinquent municipal utility charges, which would, you know, kind of apply to our sewer charges. So, I talked to our Tax Claim Bureau. They currently disqualify bidders with delinquent local taxes for the taxing district where the property is located. So, if you had delinquent property taxes, say in Brown Township, you could still bid on a borough property and, but they don't have a code violation disqualification. So, it might be worth talking to the Tax Claim Bureau and see if we can get that in place.
And could we cross so-called political boundaries or municipal lines? Say somebody kind of, for lack of a better definition, wears out their wealth in the borough by letting their properties just go and go and go, and then they decide, well, so what? We'll go to Millroy and start buying taxes.
Right. My reading is that these aren't confined to the borough or a certain township or anything. The way it works, if you've ever been to a tax sale, is you have to go in and sign an affidavit that says, you know, I don't have delinquent taxes. I don't have overdue municipal utility bills. We would kind of be talking to our Tax Claim Bureau saying, hey, why don't we talk about code violations too and disqualify people from bidding who have code violations? Now, we would have to, of course, give them a list of people on who have the serious code violations.
I've been to, but I've never bought.
Yeah.
What do you consider local taxes? Just the township or borough or township, borough, and or county, school district?
It's local taxes in the taxing district where the property is located. Those, I think, are, so, I think they would be school county or local taxes, say in the borough.
County covers the whole county and school district covers the whole county. So, anybody that's delinquent on any tax, early bill or late bill, would be disqualified by large.
Yeah, they currently only do it in the taxing district in which, taxing district in which the property is located. I think that might be the, I think that is how the state law reads, so we might not be able to do that, go across municipal boundaries in that case. But it might be worth setting up a meeting with Tax Claim Bureau to at least talk about whether we could, you know, make some changes to how they run the tax sale to prevent people who own current delinquent properties or code violation properties from getting other properties in the borough. The recorder of deeds pursuant to state law, there can be a fee for deeds and mortgages. Currently, the county has about $40,000 for demolition of delinquent properties that they raised in 2018. So, that's, that's something that's available to the borough and to other municipalities. I don't think they've quite figured out how they want to administer that program yet, but the money is there, so at some point, that's going to go towards demolition. You know, demolition is something that allows the removal of unsafe structures. If the borough finds that there's enough value in the property to recoup the cost of demolition, the borough can place a lien on the property. When it's transferred, then the borough can be reimbursed. You know, there's not always, there are probably not usually enough value there to actually pay for the demolition itself, so it's something where the borough can wind up actually like paying out some money or using some of its CDBG funds. So, that's always a consideration for council when it's determining whether it wants to put money into tearing the property down. You know, the borough has police powers and safety responsibility towards citizens, so if there are, you know, certain dangerous properties, they probably should be torn down if, you know, if there's enough of a public safety concern for the borough to want to exercise those police powers. Conservatorship is another state law. It's where a third party is appointed by the court to fix up or demolish the property. Once again, there are liens that can be put on the property. The property, in theory, can be sold at a later time to try and recoup any cost of demolition or rehabilitation. Land banks are something that we had a few years ago, we had a seminar about land banks. I don't think that it would make sense for the borough itself to really make its own land bank, but it might be something that the county or, you know, a group of municipalities might want to look into doing. It's kind of its own little government entity. Its job is to take over a property that no one else wants and try and, you know, get it back onto the tax rolls as a useful property. But they're usually not properties that there's a lot of value in, so they wind up costing essentially the land bank and the municipalities behind the land bank money. Rental property registration along with vacant property and foreclosed property registrations are tools that are available to allow you and your codes office mainly to have information about what properties are rentals, what properties are vacant or foreclosed. That's, you know, a rental ordinance can have two components, an inspection or a registration. These other two are mainly just registration rules that would just allow you to have kind of a database of what properties are out there, who owns them. And they all are, you know, you can charge fees that are based on the actual cost of administering the properties, or administering the programs. Presale property inspection is another thing that state law allows for. It would require that properties be inspected for code violations before deed transfer. Violations would then be reported to the seller before the sale, so they would have to be disclosed and they would have to be then fixed up within a certain amount of time for, you know, by the buyer of the properties. Once again, this is a thing where you charge a fee that is necessary to support the pre-sale inspection program. Hall of Shame, this is a freebie, I guess. It's basically, the borough would pick its, you know, X number of worst codes violators and make its own little hall of shame about them. You know, the idea is to motivate people to get in compliance with codes. You'd have to make up your own rules for what makes a owner eligible to be in your hall of shame. What Next is kind of a, you know, these are your tools, what you can do with them. I had sent around to Scott and Rex and I can send to anybody who's interested, a little publication called We Can Do This by the Housing Alliance of Pennsylvania. What it essentially has to do is set up a group to prioritize your enforcement efforts in the borough. So, you're going after the worst code violators, owners with multiple code violation, things like that. And, that's me. I kept that in there because Scott thought that was funny. He thought I had a kind of an outdated picture there. I told him it wasn't really that old.
Looks like you just got out of college, doesn't it?
Any, any questions from anybody regarding what we talked about here today?
The first one you had here of the borough building plumbing electrical maintenance group, this is for property owners, correct?
Yeah, it may mean, yeah.
Okay, so, but how do we get the complaints then? If these are electrical violations, plumbing?
I'll toss that over to Rex since he's the guy who does.
Tenants will call in and complain about their property. We had some today, tenants called in.
But what if it's not a tenant occupied property? How do you find?
Well, find stuff inside though. That's not gonna happen.
Right, okay. That's what I was, that's what I was just making sure.
Other occupant places aren't gonna call in and complain about their property.
Right, exactly. That's what I was getting at.
But, I mean, the ones that you, the ones that like Rex and Scott can see when they drive around or exterior code violation.
Right, since the water's not ready properly.
Children are using, they're referrals from the police department.
Right, fire department.
Yeah, you do get referrals from other agencies that there's problems inside of a building. You know?
Yeah, the fire department will call me, whether it's under occupied or rental.
Right.
The first problem for two plumbers officers.
Yeah, there's a lot of ways he can get in and there's a lot of agencies that do tip him off if there's issues. Is that on Rex's day? Yeah.
That was kind of my question. Thanks, Frank. The other thing, with the failure to comply code requirement, you mentioned going to the DA. On several of these, you said that people hadn't used these yet. Is this something that people have used?
I couldn't find any instances where it had been used.
Because what's, what is the likelihood that the DA is going to press criminal charges against someone for code violations?
Well, I mean, it, and they have to be serious codes.
And serious.
Right. These are health and safety violations, so. I haven't talked to the DA about it.
Right.
Everyone probably knows I'm an assistant district attorney, but we hadn't really talked about this yet. I figured I would kind of put this out to Borough Council and you guys could look into whether or not you think this is something that you want to pursue. I mean, you know, what are the, what are the likelihoods someone goes to jail for this? I think it would probably be a very serious code violation, but.
Right, because that's ultimately up to the DA and then, and then the judge.
Right, and if they're convicted, it will be up to the judge.
But I think if we, you know, really went down that route, I mean, and in some cases I believe maybe we should, maybe it's a meeting, you know, with Law and Ordinance Committee, Code Enforcement or Executive Committee and the DA to try to, you know, have a conversation with them to allow him to appreciate how severe the issue is and how it's affecting our community.
Well, I mean, we have to develop a plan. I mean, that involves the mayor, that involves the chamber, that involves council, that involves the police, that involves community and fire departments, everything, you know, and then what we have to look at is assess to the nation extent of it, like, you know, how many do we have? What, how, you know, rehabilitation is needed, number of parcels, number it's occupied and those. Maintenance needed, you know, demolition's needed. We need a map of basin and finding where all these are at and get a list of them and go from there.
I'm gonna send everybody this, the Five Steps booklet, because it really does lay out kind of a, I thought it was a nice little plan to at least get started because it's somewhat overwhelming when you, you know, you look.
Is that the Blight to Bright?
Yeah, it comes from that organization, yeah. PA Housing Alliance is a good organization and I, I mean, I got a lot of this information from them. They have what's called the Blight to Bright Manual, which gives this information in more and in much more detail, and it's available online. It's a, it's a good publication that I've used many times myself.
There's also a national one too. It's called Center for Community Progress as well, so that's another tool to use too.
I realize this was, you know, a lot of big information dump on everybody. You know, I think maybe the next thing to do is I'll, I'll send that publication around. People can look at it and determine whether or not, you know, this is something council wants to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good work.
Okay, at the December council meeting, we had, I think his name is Mr. Platt was there and was speaking about the property at 672 and 674 Valley Street. He's concerned with the dilapidated condition of the property, the fact that it's about ready to fall down, the fact that it's, could have liability ramifications to the borough. Wanted to know what we were gonna do about it. So, we've been, we've been working on this. First of all, the property has gone back into the clear and, well, basically the county's conservatorship, and it can be purchased on a free and clear sale just by making an offer on the property. Secondly, Rex has gotten three bids to tear it down, the highest being $24,000 and the lowest being $14,800 with, by Mike's Landscaping and Excavating. And third, we have talked with the county and they're very interested in partnering on this, on blighted properties, not only in the borough, throughout the county. County can only participate on the demolition cost. They can't participate on the legal cost, they can't participate on whatever bid that we want to put in on the property, but they can participate in the demo. And their proposal is that they would participate in projects at 50% of the demo cost with the cost not to exceed $10,000. So, in this particular case, it would be a property that we could participate with the county on. The, so, on the $14,800, you know, we're looking at $7,400 each in demo cost. We figure, Mark figures about $1,000 in legal costs. In speaking with several of the commissioners, I think that the properties could be had for a very nominal fee, probably like $50 each. And then whatever the total costs are in the project, so we're looking at $14,800, another thousand for legal, $15,800, another hundred, fifteen, let's say 16,000, whatever our percentage is, I think that's, our percentage would be roughly fifty, let's say 60%, the county's 40. We turn around and then knock it down and sell it, whatever we sell it for, that revenue would be split 60-40 with the county. So, I was very, very excited with the fact that the county wants to use some of their Act 152 money to help us.
Right, that's that recorder deeds fee.
Okay, but I think, I guess, as you can see by the agenda, I have three items that I'm asking for. One would be a motion and approval to place a bid on the property. Two would be to, upon successful acquisition, to hire Mike Watson's landscaping to tear it down. And then three would be to enter into this agreement with the county to do this.
Well, what is, what is the agreement with the county? What's, do you have the written agreement?
I have the bullet points.
Yeah, I mean, we need to see a written agreement on that. I'd wait until we get all the specifics of it.
Well, what I'd recommend then, until we get the specifics, which we can run through law and ordinance next week at the meeting, would be to, one, purchase the property and get Watson, you know, put him on notice. We'd like to have him knock it down. One, I will tell you the one thing, the county is very sympathetic to our problem here in the borough, and they're not going to, they're not gonna let happen what happened in this particular case, and they let somebody buy it totally sight unseen with no plan whatsoever of what to do with this property. So, they, but they just had one just last week where somebody wanted to buy a property in the borough and they basically said, look, we want to see a plan. We're not gonna sell you this. And then we want to see a date that it's gonna happen by. We'll see the plan and when it's gonna happen by.
I mean, I know it sounds wrong, good, but it needs to be written.
Oh, I have the bullet points. I don't have the actual thing, but. Oh, I have the bullet points, I don't have the actual thing, but...
It's, this is, this is the fir, this will be the first one that the county's done. We can work with the county to get an agreement put together pretty quickly. I mean, this isn't, this is something that we, I think we can turn around pretty quick.
My understanding is that our legal cost and cost of acquisition would come out of the sale price first?
Yes.
Then the balance would be split fifty, fifty with the county, is that correct?
Well, basically it would be on a percentage, whatever the total cost is. Let's see, we have eight thousand and they have seven, you know, so whatever that percentage is, it's how the, the revenue would be split.
I mean, that's...
You gotta be basically frank with you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gonna be very close.
I'm looking very optimistically into the future of actually selling this piece of ground, though. And I don't, with the, you know, building codes and building ordinances, I don't, how do you build a property like that in the, in the borough these days?
Have you looked at it?
I know where the property is.
Have you looked at the property? The property runs street to street. It's, it drops from Valley Street probably eight or ten feet to Central Avenue, and is accessible from Central Avenue. It's a double house, it's a little bit wider lot than what you normally have. It would be okay for parking, a side yard, or a little home, accessible from Central Avenue. I want to have looked at it. And the building is bad. It needs to come down, it's bad. I wouldn't even, I like to salvage stuff, but I wouldn't even go inside. I was afraid. So, there you go. Yeah, it's not, it's not, it's not an unusable property, it can be used.
And is it? I heard there was a mention before the, the meeting about trying to maybe develop off-street parking for that area. I mean, I...
I would, I would recommend that you try not to take it off the tax rolls.
That's very valid.
Once we buy it, it's off the rolls, once we sell it, it gets back on. Now, there you go. But we're lucky that it went free and clear. You know, if it was a first sale, then we'd be dealing with, with a lot of expense to take that property.
Do we have a motion? To place a bid on the property?
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to place a bid on the property not to exceed two hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay.
Little price tag on the bid, Larry?
He said he thought he could get it for fifty each, I...
Is that the price?
That's...
Is that the motion?
Well, the motion not to exceed two hundred dollars, which gives them leeway.
I mean, I, I have a major concern with being able to sell property, I really do.
Yeah, I mean, we can't be concerned by already now, whether we're gonna sell it yet or not.
Do you need a second on that, or not?
We have a second.
You have a second?
Yep. Let's do a roll call, Diana.
Frank Barrier.
Yes.
Nate Campbell.
Yes.
Larry Seer.
Yes.
Mark Seaver.
No.
Phil Wilson.
Yes.
Ian Shade.
Yes.
Okay, the, the other thing, I would like, once we have successful acquisition of the property, I would like to have approval to entering with an agreement with Watson to knock it down.
Wait, 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 wait. Think you're getting the card ahead of the horse here. First, next thing you should do is make sure that you have an agreement with the county to do everything we need to do, and deal with Watson now.
Okay.
I, I, I think we need a motion here to have Mark draft an agreement with the county for presentation at our next meeting, and I'll make that motion. And then at that point, we can act on the wording of bid to Watson.
I'll shake that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So, last year at this exact time, we awarded the cleaning contract for Borough Hall to Perfection Commercial Cleaning. I asked both Perfection and New Vision to give me another estimate for fiscal 2019. Perfection came in, they were at three fifteen, they came in at four eighty-five, and New Vision came in at three ninety. So I recommended to council that they approve the cleaning contract with New Vision for fiscal 2019.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All those in favor say aye? I'm sorry, discussion?
Have we had them before?
They cleaned the place.
We were satisfied with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we switched because of matter of cost, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was certainly a matter of cost, and I told, I told them that we would give them another opportunity to bid this year.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I have here eleven resolutions. It's basically submitting an application to PennDOT for traffic signal upgrades at each of the eleven interchanges that they're gonna do this year. So I think you could probably do this, Mark, can I do one, one total vote for all eleven resolutions? It's the exact same thing for every intersection.
I guess someone makes the motion that way.
What intersections are they, Scott?
Basically, every intersection on Third Street, every, every intersection has a light, every intersection on Market Street that has a light, and then every intersection up Valley to Walnut.
And this is upgrading to LED traffic lights and the sensor cross?
Yeah, they're, they're the ones that are activated by the all emergency vehicles, they have those sensors. They're actually gonna be, instead of now, they just automatically switch or on a timer, these will, these will stay green until somebody comes and sets it off, and then they'll change. And not only are they putting in new lights, but they are completely redoing all the intersections, for all new arms, all new concrete sidewalks, ramps, everything.
And specifically...
It's your state taxes at work.
Right, that's one of the things we pay taxes for.
So if somebody would like to make a motion to adopt all eleven resolutions?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, why don't you ask someone, what else did I...
I think we're up to you, Mayor.
No, who was?
Appointment of two positions to the Police Advisory Board?
Scott. No, I, there was one other thing I wanted to bring up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So one of the things that we put in our budget for 2019 was the purchase of a wheel loader. We have a hundred and seventy thousand budgeted, eighty-five from refuse and eighty-five from general borough, which is coming out of state liquid fuels. We have been investigating wheel loaders, and right now is a very advantageous time to buy real, real, real low hour used equipment, and I think it's because they're not building roads right now. But anyhow, we've come up with a couple, a couple of front, or wheel loaders, Case five, five...
Five twenty-one.
Case five twenty-one F. And what I mean low hours, we're talking like a hundred and twenty-seven hours, which is...
Which is two miles for a car.
That's what I said, you want to tell me used, instead of brand new.
Yeah, so we budgeted a hundred and, a hundred and seventy thousand, this one is a hundred and eight thousand. So it's basically thirty-nine percent, what, what, Mark?
I said, there you go.
Yeah, so...
What's a new one cost?
A hundred and seventy. So I think it's, you know, for something that low, and they have a warranty.
Same warranty?
They cut, not, not brand new, but they still have three thousand hour warranty, and it's warranted through October of nineteen, so what I'm asking council for tonight is the ability for us to present all the details, the final number, to the finance committee, which meets a week from Thursday, and I think we ought to move on this, and kind of like you just did, Larry, on that bid, give us like the ability to purchase a new wheel loader not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand. And it's budgeted at a hundred and seventy, but I think we're gonna come in, because we want to give it the land of price, this one we're looking at a hundred and eight thousand from West Virginia, and it's gonna cost about seven hundred to get it here. And what we want to do is put together a bid, get it approved by finance, put the bid out, because it's, anything over nineteen seven, we have to bid it out. And then we would write, we would write a bid that was, you know, it would, it would come pretty close to what we wanted to buy.
And the case, and, you know, that is something that we can have serviced locally too. FYI.
So, but it's gonna be, they will hold, they will hold a wheel loader for thirty days, but until we get all this done, we're gonna be past the, I, I think we're, I don't know if we'd be able to hold it until the council, we might be able to.
So you're looking for a motion to draft a proposal for a bid to purchase a wheel loader?
It would be, the finance committee would give the final blessing on it.
Why are they getting rid of it?
This one, there's a lot of them here. I guess, I have, there's a bunch of them, and I think it's about the time of the year. The one that I really like, though, that's from West Virginia, the guy own, he owns a Case distributorship, and he also has a construction company, and he used this particular vehicle on one of his projects, and that's how he put a hundred and thirty miles on it, or a hundred and thirty hours on it, and he just wants to get unloaded. So he probably bought it at a pretty advantageous price.
Or some companies will buy them to use them for a summer or a season, and they'll sell them at the end of the...
But there's, there's...
Maybe outstate or...
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of them.
So let me get this straight, we have a hundred and eighty thousand dollars budgeted for this.
Right.
Half from refuse and half from state liquid fuels.
Correct.
All right, so it's already in the budget, and you have an opportunity to buy a used machine for one twenty or less, right? Why don't we just act on it tonight and move on? Why does it have to go through finance? It's already budgeted.
Then you have to bid it out.
Well, we have to bid it out, but we can take action tonight to bid it out and move on it, if you're afraid of them selling it to somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, the quicker we could get on this, the quicker we could have an opportunity to save the borough a substantial amount of money.
We draw up the bid specs and put it out to bid immediately.
One second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I understand that we're obviously shooting, you know, a specific thing here, but it just, we, we have to make sure that it's, you know, relative to those hours, the hundred and twenty-five hours, under a hundred and thirty hours, be able to be serviced locally, the warranty, which is all there, so I think it's a good...
Should be all specked out.
Yeah, I did check on that, that, those, the engine that they're, they have is rebuildable.
It is an international...
And it's a Fiat.
My only issue is that the, the warranty's only good till October this year.
Which, if there's anything wrong with it, where's Ben or Tim?
Did you look at, see what, how much it costs for, is that they're working on it?
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea.
Maybe not. Well, I mean, Ben or Tim, do you guys have any thoughts, any input here, anything to add, any discussion?
Like I will, or, I mean, my intention is buy a platform in the future, I mean, it's a great tool, it's a quick connect in the front, I mean, we could plow downtown, make downtown even nicer, I mean, it's a bend-in situation for, for all the things.
And the way that we're purchasing it, we're not held captive by only being allowed to visit on a certain property within Taro, which is, is a good thing.
Yeah, we worked, we worked closely with Scott this afternoon in putting this together, and, you know, we're in agreeance that, you know, we think it's a good deal, and, you know, we're able to, you know, potentially save, you know, upwards of sixty thousand dollars on pretty much a brand-new machine.
Right.
So, yeah.
Sounds all well and good to me, as well.
And we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you very much.
Al, he's done. Now it's your turn, Eric.
First of all, I appreciate, or we appreciate that everybody placed the application, we had multiple applications this time, and that made the decision a little, little difficult, but we did review the applications, and we have chosen James Carter Jr. and Randy Hughes as our new members. Jason.
Okay, now who made that choice?
The advisory board.
Who's advisory board? The board itself, the board, the board got out.
Yeah.
This is something the council, we have to ultimately vote on. The other individual that you had mentioned, Deb, I mean, I don't even see any previous
experience with any, within the first responder community.
I mean, Randy.
We like a, we like a diverse group, because everybody has something different to contribute, and he is a minister, and we thought that he would serve us well. He's one that's very active in the community, extremely active.
See, the minister does a career of national layout.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion now?
No, we do not.
I'll make a motion that we approve the two, the two members as advised by the Police Advisory Board, their selection.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Is there any reason we should split these up or vote on them separately? Is that an issue with anybody? Anybody on our board?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Looking for approval due to what the handicap space at four oh five West Fifth Street, people moved and they don't want to leave it.
Tell them both.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, in favor of removing the parking spot, the handicap parking All those in favor of removing the parking spot, uh, handicap parking space at 405 West Fifth Street, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Looking for approval for 240 West Fifth Street to put a handicap space in. Guy has off-street parking, but there's two flight stairs up from the back, and he has an asthma issue.
Didn't he also have knee surgeries, Bill?
I don't.
I thought that was one of his.
I don't know, it's not on there, it is.
Yeah, two knee surgeries.
Two knee surgeries.
Art surgery.
I think it was on the back, Bill.
Not, oh, maybe it is.
It, I don't know if it was double-sided or not.
So moved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any public comments?
Mr. Severs. I'd like to know why, and what your reasoning is.
We need your name and address, just for the record, sir.
I live at 670 Valley Street. I'd like to know why, on the record, you're opposed to people living next to condemned blighted properties for 11 years, as of the 28th of this month. When the property's caving in, it's not only a health hazard because of the critters and everything that are there, but it's a safety hazard, too.
Is that because you don't live next to it, or is it because you don't give damn? No, yeah, I do, that sounds weird. Just from my position, I understand what you're saying, I understand that. My position is, is I want to get everything in order and in place, written, that we have a policy, how we're gonna address these blighted properties, and have that in order and move forward on it, that's the only thing I'm saying. I understand what you're saying.
I think your listener addressed that this evening.
We're not.
I also think you're going in the right direction.
It's a toll.
But that's not the problem.
It's a toll, but it's something we're gonna discuss in the future as well, so, yes, I totally understand what you're saying, but.
Then why do you keep voting against it?
I just told you. I told you. I want to get a plan in place that we actually have implemented in our ordinance, we have a plan, we know where all these properties at, and we move forward.
Okay, and what am I supposed to do in the meantime?
I understand what you're saying.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
I've lived next to it for 11 years, you haven't.
You need to move on, Mr. Plath.
It was passed.
It passed.
Yeah, it was passed.
Yeah.
I still like, I still.
I just explained that to you.
Not satisfied with your reasoning.
Well, you don't have to, he gave you a reason.
And I respect your opinion.
Anyone else? I'm sorry.
I thought that we had to approve an individual for the rec board.
It's gotta go through the rec board first, since this is a meeting.
Anyone else have a comment?
Are we planning an executive session tonight?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I would like to have one.
Okay, I guess we are.
This would be, this would have to do with personnel, uh, we have a employee in the borough, who has caused a lot of problems on Facebook, and would like to address that.
Yes, okay.
The borough employee.
So, we will recess for executive session.